Hello and welcome to Pittsburgh City Council's Standing Committee's meeting for Wednesday, March 6, 2019. My name is Kim Clark-Baskin and I'm your deputy city clerk. With us today, we have our sign language interpreter, Logan Showalter. The following is a list of legislation up for preliminary approval by Pittsburgh City Council. Finance and Law Committee, Reverend Burgess is the chair. Bill number 2018-0698. Ordinance amending the Pittsburgh Code Title I Administrative Article VII Procedures, Chapter 161 Contracts to reflect current best practices in local current government procurement. Bill number 1338. Ordinance amending, supplementing, and correcting the Pittsburgh Code at Title II Fiscal Article I Administrative, Chapter 219 Operating Budget so as to contract, so as to add contract and bid information requirements to fiscal impact statements and to further correct numbering and formatting. This bill is sponsored by Councilwoman Teresa Kell Smith and co-sponsored by Councilwoman Erica Strausberger, Councilwoman Deb Gross, and Councilwoman Darlene Harris. Bill number 1423. Resolution authorizing the issuance of a warrant in flavor, in favor of Cliff Jobe Consulting in an amount not to exceed $7,500 for services rendered as an expert witness in a police-related Bill number 1424. Resolution providing for the issuance of a warrant in a total sum of $27,000 in favor of Lori and Paul Hecht. Care of Peter Petrandria Esquire as final settlement related to the action filed in the Common Pleas Court of Allegheny County. Public Safety Services Committee, Mr. Lavelle is the chair. Bill number 1425. Resolution authorizing the mayor and director of public safety to enter on behalf of the city of Pittsburgh into an agreement with the Pittsburgh Parks Conservancy in connection with the 2018 and 2019 Naturally Northside Project. PPC has been awarded a grant from the Buell Foundation and shall reimburse the city for its expenses in connection with the city park rangers who will be staffing the Naturally Northside Project activities, cost not to exceed $11,520. Public Works Committee, Mrs. Kell Smith is the chair. Bill number 1405. Resolution authorizing the transfer by the city of Pittsburgh to the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania Department of Transportation of certain public right-of-way slope easement and temporary construction easement right on certain property of the 22nd Ward of the city of Pittsburgh to secure the right-of-way for the West Ohio Street Bridge Construction Human Resources Committee. Darlene Harris is the chair. Bill number 1426. Ordinance amending and supplementing the Pittsburgh Code Title VI Conduct Article V Discrimination, Chapter 659 Unlawful Practices, Section 659.02 Unlawful Employment Practices by adding language to prohibit employment discrimination based on pregnancy, childbirth, or related medical conditions and events. This bill is sponsored by Councilwoman Erica Strausberger. Land Use and Economic Development Committee, Ms. Gross is the chair. Bill number 1352. Resolution amending Resolution 574 approved July 25 of 2000, providing for the implementation of a residential sticker parking program in the Squirrel Hill neighborhood pursuant to Pittsburgh Code, Chapter 549, so as to amend the streets and remove addresses included in Area K. That concludes the reading of the legislation. Thank you and have a wonderful day.
Good morning and welcome to Pittsburgh City Council Standing Committee meeting of Wednesday, March 6, on a very cold, cold Pittsburgh day. Hopefully, spring is right around the corner. All right, so we start off with public comment. Members of the public that want to address the city council, please come forward with your name and neighborhood. You'll be given three minutes. Whether it takes the time to remind everyone that the rules of council state, comments limited to matters of concern, official action, or deliberations which are or may be before council. Referring will be permitted, will not be permitted, unless it's in a foreign language, I guess. An order will be maintained at all times. First speaker, please.
My name is Les Ludwig. I live in Squirrel Hill, 6589 Rosemore Street, in this somewhat cold morning. You'll say, what the hell is an 86-year-old man doing coming downtown? Well, I came to bring attention to the fact that we're all being lied to. You'll say, what? How many candidates are there for President of the United States right now? What is it, eight or nine? And more to come? Has one of them said that there's $374.1 trillion of taxes not being collected? Is that money not being, therefore, not being spent to educate, to take care of the housing, to take care of the many needs of our society? The answer is no. Does anyone have the courage to get up and say it? It's a disgrace. Instead, what have we done? We went from 24% on taxes to 25. In other words, we made more people exempt from paying taxes, and we want to know why our deficit is growing? We've got enough money in the money that's not being collected to pay off the national debt and its chump change. When you come down to including even the great argument of the wall, we're taking up all this time with the wall, the wall, the wall. And instead, we're not attacking the cause of the problems. The people are coming here wanting to be citizens in desperation, and we're not responding properly. And the money is literally going by us in taxation that is not collected, and it continues because people like you, who are the leaders in the African-American community, aren't saying, standing up and demanding the attention and saying, once and for all, you're going to educate us, you're going to lift us up so that we will be paying taxes. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
My name is Yvonne F. Brown. I live in the Hill District. First, I wanted to say that my friend showed me, Wendy showed me on the, on her little tablet where a church burnt down to the ground. They said the police, the firemen a couple of times had to back up. Then they showed not one Bible was affected. You can see the Bibles, and you can see that they were worn and they have been used. Not one Bible or one cross was burnt at all. See, God works in mysterious ways. I also wanted to say something about yesterday, I mean, about me meeting Mr. Hitwitch, your head of your police. Okay, when I first came in, I have, I've never been at a meeting that he was here, and I thought he was the one that was, the new man that was in charge. And sure enough, when I walked in, he smiled, he spoke, and then later on, I looked at that is. And I had said to him, you're the big man. We got to talking. The only reason why I bring that up is because he has a lot of authority. He sees me complaining about the police. I know he does. You know, probably anything I say, they might take it back to him. But he had the respect for me to even speak to me. See, that's what I say about you council people, there's some of you that they say you walk around, you don't speak. Why not? Who are you? You are our servant. I'm serious. I'm serious. You are our servant. You especially, Mr. Cross, need to understand that some of the way that you act and that authority, where did you get that authority? You gave yourself that authority. The law didn't. And I really, really, really want you to understand that I try not to holler. I try not to show my emotions, but when it comes to my grandchildren and you disrespect me like I'm nothing, you have to stop it. Here also, there's a problem with the head clerk with her writing the little tiny words. Where did that come from? Do you understand for people with vision, where did you get that from? And then the times seem to be changing. You had to sign up by 12. I really think that she really doesn't know. She should not have been hired in that position, and it's nothing against her. She doesn't know the rules of this state, and she must not know the rules of the ADA for handicapped or low vision is so small. And the reason why I'm saying that, because once Linda did that, moved the thing way up in the air, and I asked Doris Carson's son, and he said, look at the little font. That font is so little, looked like little ants were going across the page. You must understand that most of the people that are paying attention is all people that have vision impaired. I don't know, you have to train her better. She should be replaced with Kim. Kim, get the big job. I'm being next.
Next speaker, please. Next speaker, please. Seeing no other speakers, we'll go to the roll call.
Mr. Cockhill. Ms. Gross.
Here.
Mrs. Harris.
Here.
President Cross. Mr. Lavelle.
Yes.
Mr. O'Connor.
Yes.
Mrs. Kell Smith.
Here.
Mrs. Strausberger.
Here.
Reverend Burgess.
Here.
Six members present.
Thank you very much. We'll start off with Finance and Law Committee, which I am the chair. We have deferred paper.
Bill 698, ordinance amending the Pittsburgh Code Title I Administrative Article VII Procedures, Contracts to reflect current best practices in local government procurement.
Motion to approve. Need a second?
Second discussion.
Second discussion, Ms. Cross?
I have none, thank you.
Ms. Harris?
Yes. Good morning.
Good morning.
Please give your name.
Good morning, everyone. Jennifer Olzinger, Acting Director of Office of Management and Budget.
Okay. Just tell us about it.
Yeah, so we had spoke about this one last week in Standing Committee. There were some additional questions that some of the council folks had, so it was held for a week. But overall, I think Councilwoman, you were at the briefing, so you're pretty familiar with this, so that you know, we did make your change and clarified that one about council still having to approve all the contacts and everything. So that is included.
Right.
But generally speaking, there are some clarifications and typographical, not typographical, but references that need to be changed. A lot of the construction stuff said Public Works only. We're adding Department of Mobility and Infrastructure to that as well, because they're also now doing construction contracts. We are removing the Act 47 language, any references to the previous contract, an arrangement that was done with Allegheny County that no longer exists. We are adding a new section in regards to waivers and anything that is requested by a department to be, to skip the competitive process. There were conflicting areas of code. We have stricken the language in the conflicting areas and directed them both to this new section so that it's all concise and standard, no matter what contracted, type of contract it is, that everybody's going through the same request process for that. We are adding a new section regarding bid protests as one of the findings in our NIGP audit and some other things that we had no process for bid protests. And, you know, with the more bids that we have been doing and more contracts, it's very important that we have something in there. Another addition in Section 7 is codifying current policy and practice regarding the use of pre-qualified contracts. It's ensuring that everybody who has been pre-qualified will at least get the chance to respond to a bid, rather than somebody being able to just pick from a list and go. We're making them solicit everyone on the list and take the lowest responsible bidder from that. We are also adding some stronger language in regards to the fact that we can't have vendors write specs for us. We need to write our own specs, and we, that's also to avoid any perception that we may be steering a bid toward a particular vendor. So any consultants or anything that we have writing scopes of work for us on some of these landsides, we're hiring experts. This also confirms that they cannot write their specifications to any sort of proprietary products or anything like that that would tie us to a specific vendor or give another, give a certain supplier favor. That's what that's about. Oh, we are actually also lowering the amount for a formal RFP process from $30,000 down to $3,000. We've been doing that by policy anyway. We wanted to codify that, that we are reducing the $30,000 down to three, just because a project is maybe only $10,000. It could be very complex. It could be a piece of software that could do a lot of damage to our system and things like that. So we want to make sure that everything, for a professional service, anything that's not being based on just low bid does go through a formal RFP process. So we're just codifying and reducing that $30,000 down to three. Currently, the code allows a department just to go get three quotes on something like that and pick somebody. We have not been doing that by practice, but I want to, I just want to codify that because I think it's, if anybody has any...
How about the increase? Oh, this is the one table? Oh, okay. Okay.
I want to...
Do you want to make a motion?
If you don't mind, I'd like to make a motion to table this, and then we're going to work with the administration. I've already talked to them and some other groups that have some concerns and your office and others, but we're going to make a motion to table.
Second.
Second.
I need a roll call vote on motion to table.
Do you want to see the text I sent to Dan Gilman?
Mr. Cockhill?
The Women's Caucus decided to do this.
Yeah.
Is it not the next bill?
We're going to sit down with Reverend, too.
Is it not 1338 then, maybe?
No, that's the next, we're going to hold that one.
There's a motion to table on the floor. Roll call vote on motion.
Mrs. Gross.
Aye.
Mrs. Harris?
Aye.
President Cross?
I can't make an informed vote, no. I don't know anything about it.
Obstinate.
Mr. Lavelle. Mr. O'Connor.
Aye.
Mrs. Kell Smith.
Aye.
Mrs. Strausberger.
Aye.
Reverend Burgess. Six ayes, one no.
All right, the bill is laid on the table. It can be brought back at a subsequent time.
Can I make a comment?
All right, we are...
Only those that had vote.
Aye.
Only those who, the reason we do a roll call vote, for those who have voted for the table, the only ones that can make the motion to bring it off the table.
So can I ask next Tuesday, in the final vote, if Councilman Cross, then he could bring it back, right?
He can not bring it, but he can, he can be part of that conversation, but the motion to bring it back to the table must be made by someone who laid it on the table. That's all, that's all it does. He can still talk about it. It's just, it's just, it's just the rule of who can bring it back, that's all. Once it's brought back, we can have that conversation.
I just want to make sure we have the votes to bring.
All right, so, sure we will. It is tabled, I'm sorry, Director. We are sometimes making government, it's a little messy, and this is one of those moments. All right, so thank you very much for your presence.
I want it to be, to be right, so that's fine.
Good, thank you.
Thank you very much. We have a new, we have two, we have another deferred paper.
Bill 1338, ordinance amending, supplementing, and correcting the Pittsburgh Code at Title II Fiscal Article I Administrative Operating Budget so as to add contract and bid information requirements to fiscal impact statements and to further correct numbering and formatting.
Need a motion?
Motion to hold four weeks.
Second.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppusers, nay. It is held for four weeks.
And can I just say, we want to work together with you and with our budget office and with the administration on both of these bills.
Okay, so that, we have two new papers that can be read together, please.
Bill 1423, resolution authorizing the issuance of a warrant in favor of Cliff Jobe Consulting LLC in an amount not to exceed $7,500 for services rendered as an expert witness in a police-related matter. Bill number 1424, resolution providing for the issuance of a warrant in the total sum of $27,000 in favor of Lori and Paul Hecht as final settlement related to the action filed in the Common Pleas Court of Allegheny County.
Need a motion to hold both for executive session.
Motion to hold for executive session.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppusers, nay, they are held. There are invoices, there are invoices on the table. Can I have a motion on invoices?
Second.
Need a second, any questions, concerns about invoices, starting with Ms. Harris? Bill, are you here? There's question on invoices?
Good morning. Bill Urbannick, City Council Budget Director.
Good morning. Could you tell me about the Allegheny County Police Mounted Unit food and supplies for Allegheny County?
Yes, I can get you, I'll get you more of the specifics on that, but currently, they supply some of the food and other necessities for our mounted unit.
Okay, because it doesn't say that, it just says Allegheny County Police Mounted Unit.
Yeah, it's Allegheny County Police, but it's for the mounted unit, food and supplies.
Be nice to...
I'll be glad to give you the actual invoice or a copy of it.
Okay.
But it's a legitimate...
I mean, if it's for ours.
Yes.
But I think it should be spelled out that way.
Okay, sure. No problem.
Thank you.
Any other comments for the clarification?
Verizon Security Manager, emergency phone record search.
Yeah, this is one of those things that are under the purview of the police. I guess they needed investigative, this is, I think, due in the course of investigation, so...
Maybe you could find out about that.
Yeah, I'll be glad to give you, or ask the Public Safety Director if he can give a more specific...
Okay, then under Public Works, we have the Sonatrol Security Systems.
That's correct. There are several areas where we do have security monitoring services, one of which is public safety, the training facility. But there's other areas as well, too. I'll be glad to have them break each one of those down.
Because most of them are in two, $3,000 range.
Right.
And then we have this one, it's $450.
Right, I'm pretty sure they are for different locations, and I'll be glad to inform you of those, but I believe that we have reviewed these, and these are all good to go.
Thank you.
Sure.
Motion to approve on the table, any more conversation? No, see no conversation. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppusers, nay. All right, that brings us, I know there's no intergovernmental transfers, but there are P cards. P cards are also on the table. Need a motion for the P cards.
Motion to approve.
Need a second? Any conversation about the P cards? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppusers, nay. Thank you very much, Mr. Urbannick, for your excellent help, as always. That brings us to Public Safety Services Committee. Mr. Lavelle is the chair. We have a new paper.
Bill 1425, resolution authorizing the mayor and director of public safety to enter on behalf of the city into an agreement with the Pittsburgh Park Conservancy in connection with the 2018-2019 Naturally Northside Project. PPC has been awarded a grant from the Buell Foundation and shall reimburse the city for its expenses in connection with city park rangers who will be staffing the Naturally Northside Project activities. Said agreement shall not exceed $11,520.
Need a motion.
Motion to approve.
Need a second? Any conversation? No conversation? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppusers, nay. That brings us to Public Works Committee. Mrs. Kell Smith is the chair. Do you have an opposition of reading both of these together, or do you want them separately?
We'll read them together.
If we read both bills together, please.
Bill 1445, resolution authorizing the mayor and/or director of the Department of Mobility and/or the director of the Department of Finance on behalf of the city to enter into all necessary agreements to acquire and secure a right-of-way and temporary construction easements as needed to advance certain remediation work in or around streets run. Bill number 1405, resolution authorizing the transfer by the city to the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania Department of Transportation of certain public right-of-way slope easement and temporary construction easement rights on certain property on the 22nd Ward of the city to secure the right-of-way of the West Ohio Street Bridge Construction Project.
I need a motion, Ms. Smith.
Motion to approve.
Need a second? Any conversation? No conversation? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppusers, nay.
No.
One no. All right, that brings us to the Human Resources Committee, of which Mrs. Harris is the chair. We have a new paper.
Bill 1426, ordinance amended and supplemented the Pittsburgh City Code Title VI Conduct Article V Discrimination, unlawful practices, unlawful employment practices by adding language to prohibit employment discrimination based on pregnancy, childbirth, or related medical conditions and events.
Need a motion, Ms. Harris.
Uh... Motion to approve.
Second. Second, you defer to Mrs. Strausberger, sir, Bill.
Yes.
Ms. Strausberger.
Thank you. This is legislation that I introduced last week. You should have copy, you should have had copies of that sent to you by email, and really, this is building on legislation that then Councilman Gilman passed, or ushered through, and that this council voted on in 2014, adding pregnancy as, not a separate protected class, but as a subset of a protected class based on sex. So you can't discriminate someone, discriminate, an employer cannot discriminate against someone based on many different protected classes. This is now taking pregnancy and associated medical conditions and adding it as a separate class. And that's because if we can define it more broadly, outside of the nine-month pregnancy period, and also define partners as part of that, we know that more people will be protected from being fired, being discriminated against, being discriminated against in terms of accommodations that they might need, and thought that was really important to make that distinction like other cities and states have. So that was the reason for introducing that and the changes here. I know Megan Stanley from the Commission on Human Relations is on her way up, if there are any questions that she can answer, but mostly, this is, I think, pretty straightforward. And one thing I'll say here is that as soon as we held the press release, press conference last week, and let people know that this, that the Commission on Human Relations is a place where you can come if you feel like you've been discriminated against, that there is a guidance for employers, that there are recourses you can take, that that same day, three different people came to the Commission on Human Relations saying, I think I have a complaint that I might need to file against a previous employer or a current employer. So that shows that this is happening. I mean, discrimination is happening against pregnant individuals, partners, those who are seeking to become pregnant, those who have been pregnant and are recovering from that, and it's something that we need to get the word out about that is, you know, that there is recourse that you can take with the Commission on Human Relations. So that's all I'll say, and I'd be happy to... that. And, it's something that we need to get the word out about that is, you know, that there is recourse that you can take with the Commission on Human Relations. So, that's all I'll say, and I'd be happy to turn it over to anyone else who might have questions.
Good job.
And, we have Megan Stanley here from the Commission on Human Relations as well to answer questions.
Thank you. First, Mr. Gross, then, Ms. Gross.
So, I just want to thank the Councilwoman for her work. I think it's very forward-thinking, and if I may, I'd like to join you as a co-sponsor, please.
Thank you, Councilman.
Thank you. Ms. Gross?
Thank you. Also, I was proud to be a co-sponsor on the original legislation, but I'd be happy to be a co-sponsor on this one as well. And, thank you for kind of more foregrounding, as you stated, taking it from like a subordinate clause to being a category in and of itself. And, so, that's really a great story, and I didn't know that. Thank you for sharing that we've already had people come forward.
I just learned that this morning.
Fantastic. Very good work. Appreciate it.
Any other conversation? No other conversation?
I was going to just congratulate her too.
Ms. Smith?
That's it.
All of us appreciate your work. It affects all of us, our families, our relationships. And, so, we appreciate you.
You know, I will also sponsor...
All of us. All right, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppusers, nay. Positive recommendation. It takes us to the Land Use and Economic Development Committee of where Mrs. Gro... Pardon me?
Yes, I would like to consider part of, in Public Works, 1425 for another vote.
I'm not sure what you're asking. Wait, what?
That we could bring 1425 back for another vote. And, I'll explain why.
14...
1405.
1424.
Wait a minute, is that...
1405, Councilwoman, you mean?
1445. You voted no on two. She wants to register an aye vote on 1445.
I don't think so.
Yeah, the Streets Run Road one?
Okay.
The Streets Run Road one.
But, do you want to discuss 1445 or 1405?
1405.
Oh, I thought you wanted to register.
West Ohio Street.
Mm-hmm.
All right, so, in order to do that, there needs to be, in order to do that, there needs to be a motion to reconsider.
Motion to reconsider.
Needs a second.
Second.
Mrs. Harris?
Yes.
I'm sorry, there needs to be a vote on the motion to reconsider. Roll call vote.
Aye.
Mrs. Harris?
Aye.
President Gross?
No.
Mr. Lavell?
No.
Mrs. Kail Smith?
No.
Mrs. Strasburger?
No.
Reverend Burgess?
No.
Two ayes, five nos.
All right.
Can I just say something that I, I know this is important to Councilwoman Harris, and I would like to sit down with her and the administration before final vote next week.
Okay, we'll have that conversation. I didn't, I don't know this issue. I'm certainly willing to find out more.
What it is, is it's West Ohio Street Bridge. It's in my district.
Same double-decker argument we were having before?
Well, there are...
No, 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 I'm just...
People are paying, neighborhood is paying for attorneys, and it's costing neighborhood a lot. So, the city is also going to have to get involved in this.
So, we can have that conversation. We can still have it between now and final vote. I just was unaware of any issue on that.
And, I would say that...
And, so, so, let's go to the next committee.
We usually support each other's districts.
Well, we have not finally passed it. We can bring this back to, we can recommit it if necessary.
That's where I'm at right now.
We can recommit it if necessary, once we figure out what the issue really is.
Okay.
All right, all right, so, Land Use and Economic Development Committee, Mrs. Gross is the chair. I think the first two bills can be read together.
Yep. Bill 1453 Resolution amending Resolution 103 as to transfer funds within City Council from District 1 to Bridge Committee Allen Place Community Services, Brightwood Civic Group Artists Image Resources and Beachview Manor to Beachview Manor Housing Management Services, $5,000. Bill number 1454 Resolution amending Resolution 102 so as to transfer funds within the City Council as follow District 1 to Bridge Committee Allen Place Community Services, Brightwood Civic Group Artists Image Resources and Beachview Manor to Beachview Manor Housing Management Services, $5,000.
I need a motion to approve first. Mrs. Harris?
Motion to approve.
Or, it's Ms. Gross, I'm sorry, wrong person. Ms. Gross?
Motion to approve discussion.
Second.
Second. And, now, there are two written amendments on the table. I need a motion to amend both.
Councilwoman, do you like me to motion to move forward your amendment?
Yes, please.
Motion to amend.
Need a second.
Second.
All those in favor of the amendments?
And 1953.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry, I'm going too fast. Okay, there's a motion amended on the table. It's been properly moved in second. Let's vote first on the amendment. All those in favor of the amendment, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppusers, nay. That takes us back to the original motion, the original bill as amended. Ms. Gross?
I have no questions.
Ms. Harris?
Thanks for supporting this one. This is moving monies around to support the neighborhoods in District 1.
All right, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppusers, nay. All right, positive recommendation. That takes us to this fast-moving meeting on a cold day to our last paper, I believe, which is a deferred paper on page six. If you read the bill, please.
Bill 1352 Resolution amending Resolution 574 Providing for the Implementation of a Residential Sticker Parking Program in the Squirrel Hill Neighborhood pursuant to Pittsburgh Code Chapter 549 so as to amend the streets and remove addresses included in Area K.
Need a motion, Ms. Gross, to approve.
Motion to hold one minute.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppusers, nay. All right, it's held for one week. First of all, I'll make a meeting announcement, then I'll make a general comment, and then I'll open it up to the floor. This afternoon at 1:30, council will hold a cablecast public hearing on Bill 2019 1353 as it relates to amending and supplementing the Pittsburgh Code by creating Title 13 Stormwater Management. Secondly, I want to make just a general statement. Today, we've had a couple of movements on bills that we did not talk about before today. You do not have to, as a councilperson, you have the right to go through bills as you see fit. However, I will lend my support, as always, to help guide you or to get a consensus. And, so, I would prefer, I want to help. I'm simply saying, if you let me know ahead of time kind of what the issue is and what we want to do, I will try to assist you and give you options and vote with you. I just, today was an unusual day, but I would hope that we would, in the future, try to talk more about it before it comes to the table, at least among ourselves, so we understand the issue.
I'd like to apologize, because that was my fault. I should have talked with you as a chair, at least, at the very least. And, I didn't have the chance to do that.
Okay.
Honestly, and I saw an email that went out, and I just, I thought you were copying, but it was just between council members. And, so, I apologize. Because, it was really my fault, my responsibility. I said I would, I said I would notify you, and I didn't.
That's okay. That's okay.
But, I do want to say, there's a lot of times members don't talk to the women either.
Right. Just so we can be efficient. I saw Mr. O'Connor first, then Ms. Gross.
Just briefly, I want to thank Councilwoman Smith for moving 1445 Streets Run Road up. We waived Rule 8 on it, so we are going to get easements to go in and clean out the creek and build new walls in the next couple of months. And, then, I'd also like to call for a cablecast post-agenda on the youth participatory budget that we had last year. The kids are forming their report and will be done probably early April, so I would just like to make a motion, call for that.
Second.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppusers, nay. That takes us to Mrs. Gross, then back to Ms. Smith.
Thank you. I just wanted to readdress this issue about the bridges, and I don't have it in front of me, but I noticed that after Councilwoman Harris raised so many questions about that bridge in the north side, we, council did approve the funding, but that the mayor has subsequently, I think, appealed to Pendot to not raise the height of the bridge. Am I current on that?
I don't know what the administration has done on that. However, I know that there are attorneys involved. The community has also went out and got an attorney. If, and I had a meeting in the neighborhood with both state, state reps, a volunteer from the community as my volunteered staff, and 12 of the state reps, two senators and 12...
I just wanted to acknowledge that you were raising this issue, and I just want to also share that I was in Polish Hill last night with the Polish Hill Civic Association, and we were having a meeting on something else entirely. And, one of, and it was a pretty full room, and one of the residents stood up and said, "I want to know if anyone else in the room is concerned about the double-decker trains, because I am very concerned." And, they are forming their own subcommittee in Polish Hill. So, I just wanted to acknowledge and remind all of council members that there are three bridges that I'm aware of that are in the way of the double-decker trains, and that if I'm not mistaken, the one after the north shore, the north side, would be the one in the strip district that joins, you know, the 28th Street Bridge.
Well, first...
And, so, this is something that I think the community residents are really aware of and organizing around, and I think that we'll have, you know, I think, a public conversation about what we're doing with the bridges and how our public feels about the double-decker trains traveling through the highly densely populated areas.
Yeah, this is also...
That's all I have to say.
I thank you very much, Ms. Smith, then. You want to, that's up to her. You want to have, Mrs. Harris like to have an interogative with you.
I just wanted to acknowledge that the residents in Polish Hill are also very concerned about this issue on the road.
That was a, that was a no. We're not in, we're not in that part. We'll get back to you, but she did...
Is that a no or a yes?
Well, if you could make a brief comment, because I just wanted to acknowledge that they are also very aware.
Okay, yes. And, and so, is Bloomfield. And, I understand that Shady Side is getting very involved too right now. And, we're trying to hold it where it's at, because where it goes next is where a hump is in the street. And, they want to bring that up as high as the double-decker. There's also 1490-degree bends coming through the community. And, it's a real issue. I know it's starting on the north side. We're trying to hold it right now. So, and if they start building the bridge, then they're going to have to bring the bridge back down, and it's going to cost the city more money.
Thank you very much. Ms. Smith, followed by Mrs. Strasburger.
I'd like to call for a cablecast post-agenda regarding the double-stacked trains. Actually, maybe we should call it Trains, Planes, and Automobiles, because it seems like we have a lot of things going around our city right now. But, right now, the trains...
Cablecast public, there's a motion for a cablecast public...
Second.
Post-agenda, not public. Post-agenda on bridges.
I'd also like to have the mayor at that.
And, I like...
So, so, okay, first, first of the two...
The mayor.
Two separate things. First of all, there's a motion, I think that was second by Ms. Gross, to have a cablecast post-agenda on trains. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppusers, nay. Now, it is Mrs. Smith's post-agenda. Certainly, you can talk with her, and she will talk with the clerk about inviting the appropriate invite list.
Right. And, I would like the mayor himself to be at that public hearing.
Again...
I know Ms. Smith has asked for people at my public hearings.
Again, my understanding of the, my understanding of the protocol...
Agenda.
My understanding of the protocol, that person who calls for the post-agenda, chairs the post-agenda, and generally does the invite list. So, I think that's something the two councilpeople...
I'm just saying it publicly.
Did we take it already? Thank you, I can't remember.
Okay, now...
I just finished my comments.
Sure.
So, I'd like to say that I, the lawsuit, I think you're referring to was, what was it, Easto?
Uh, forgive me, let me get back there.
Brighton Road, not...
Uh, the, actually, the city, oh, excuse me. The city filed suit on the Brighton Road, not West Ohio Bridge.
But, now, I want to also say that I've also heard the mayor. I actually think this is a subject Councilwoman Harris and he agree upon. I've heard him talk publicly. I've seen him tweet about it, and I think he has a concern as well. But, it's my understanding that we need to address this issue first and then address that issue. But, it, this is, otherwise, this could cost the city millions of dollars if we don't...
It's going to cost the city millions of dollars, because...
And, I'm talking, Ms. Harris. And, so, anyway, so, I think that what we'd like to do is address this issue, have that conversation, and have the post-agenda, and try to come up with some solutions. And, I do know that you and he, the two of you have shared concerns in this area, so I think it would be good for us to have a conversation with the administration prior to the final vote next week.
Ms. Strasburger?
I withdraw my request to speak.
Ms., anyone else? Ms. Harris?
Yes. On this, we again are trying to keep this here, because once the railroad has to dig under because of Brighton Road and West North Avenue, it's going to have to come down lower to where it is now, which means the bridge also will have to come down lower. And, the other issue is not having double-stacked trains go through there, because each neighborhood should be really concerned of the double stack because of the 1490-degree turns from here to Shady Side. And, Bloomfield, Bloomfield has been through this when Dick Caligari were, Dick Caligari was mayor. And, they were evacuated. They had to take their animals and everything. They came back, and they had to be evacuated again because of another spill. And, that was just with a regular train. And, now, they're going to try to put double-stacked trains through the communities of the city of Pittsburgh is wrong.
Any other conversation? No conversation? I need a motion to excuse the absent members, approve the minutes, and adjourn the meeting.
Seven.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppusers, nay. We are adjourned. Thank you.